Hey y'all, what's good with y'all out there? You feel me? This is another episode of the serious glare. I'm your lovely or hated host Kamal, AKA the black Seinfeld, AKA magic X. And today, I got a guest for y'all. He running for city council in San Diego, you feel me? Bruh, I gotta give you some air horns for that, bruh, you feel me? I don't meet many people that's running for city council, bro, you feel me? I got, I got my bruh, I got my guest Ellis California Jones, you feel me? In the building, man, I'm gonna give you some more air horns, bruh, you feel me? You know what I mean, hand clap for you too. For my guest and for my audience out there, you feel me? So, once, once we come onto screen, I'm, I want you to let the people know who you are, where you come from, your campaign, what else you want my audience to know? And then we gonna hop into this convo and get into the dirty beats of, you know, politics and policies and things in that nature, you feel me? So, once again, we got my guest Ellis California Jones, you feel me? Let my people know what's up with you.
Hey, how you guys doing? My name is Ellis California Jones the third, L S T California Jones the third. Was born here in this district, I was born at Balboa Hospital. My dad was a Navy guy, my mom was from down south. You know, they actually met in South Carolina when he was stationed out there, moved out here and then here I am. You know, yeah, was a, grew up in City High, San Diego, right over there. Went to Hoover High School, played a little football. Went to college, played a little college football.
Okay, what colleges you go to?
I went to San Jose State.
Okay, hell yeah.
From and shit. Yeah, we actually met before too, I actually met you with, with Anthony White, A dot.
Yeah, shout out to A dot, man, hell yeah.
Yeah, that's kinda how it came on the, you know, we kinda, our planets kinda rotated around each other. And so, yeah, went to San Jose, got in a little trouble out there, ended up doing some time, went through the whole system process while I was in there. You know, obviously changed my life, but very involved in education. Helped a lot of guys in there get their GED, you know, me coming from college, was a law clerk in there, did a lot of things. And I got out, started it, well, started from the bottom, started working with bird, came downtown, was working downtown, ended up moving up in bird, became the area lead of San Diego because I was able to help them solve problems. One of the problems was theft, you know, theft of the merchandise they had, which was the bird scooters. I don't know if you've ever ridden one of those before, the crazy thing is, I got out, probably the second day I got out, Anthony, right? A dot, right, what they call him, we used to call him Killer B. Cause it's a long story, but A dot took me to, you know, where wonder spaces is, right here down, it's actually right over here now where I live. Before, yeah, before that, I was on my dad's couch, I think, I had just parole.
Hmm, okay.
Anthony picked me up, Anthony drives these cars, you know, he drives, I forgot what car he had, but he's.
Yeah, like a, is it called an IV or one of them freaking fast ass souped up cars?
Or Evo, I believe. So he had an Evo, man, driving me through San Diego. He takes me to wonder spaces, you know, and me getting out, like, growing up, you know, we didn't do things like that, go to art museums and stuff like that, we tried to, but he took me to wonder spaces and he was like, man, you gonna dig this? But we couldn't find nowhere to park, which is a big campaign issue. But we couldn't find anywhere to park, so we had to ride bird scooters. And that was my first time riding a scooter. Fast forward a month later, I was with my other homie that we all grew up with, my Asian homie, he's actually Vietnamese, Vietnamese American, grew up with him. He works for a staffing agency. He hit me up, right, we went out to, we went to like a bar or something in PB. Ended up, I ended up letting him ride the scooter, right? Cause I became a fan of the bird scooter when I rode it that first day, it was like freedom, you know, zen, like zipping through the streets. And this is before we had the bird twos, this was like the old school, like beat up scooters that used to break and everything like that.
What year was that, like 20s?
This was 2018.
2018, okay.
Yeah, but, long story short, my, my friend Jamie worked at a staffing agency and he hit me up and he was like, hey, you know those scooters that we was riding that day? He was like, you know, they have a job opening, it's like part-time. You know, shot my shot, went in there, turning my resume, started working for them, moved up, ended up being the area lead. Anyway, I was able to solve problems with the theft problem going on between a lot of homeless people, a lot of guys coming across the border still in scooters, I was able to put a stop to that. Rose quickly in the San Diego market in the company. During COVID, I got laid off, like a lot of people doubled back and went into business with the same company that laid me off, which was bird. Started off with 25 scooters at 800 each, right? Ended up having 300 or close to like 300 downtown San Diego. Yes, so, and I moved my, you know, I moved down here, got a spot downtown, ended up starting my business down here and running it, ran it for a couple of years until the city over-regulated us. And now I'm back, you know, I'm back in the job market now. Like a lot of guys during COVID, doing the double dance, working and having a business on the side. And so, going through that and everything and then seeing who we have running the city and obviously living down here and not liking it, I decided to put my hat in the race and run against this guy, Stephen Whitburn. And that's where we're at right now, you know, but that's the kinda crazy thing is that Anthony, the one that actually connected us in a way. I was, I think I was holding the bag for him when I got out. When I got out, I was doing everything I could just to get like, you know, assimilated back into society. But also, you know, when I like, the way I was raised, if you ain't got nothing, you gotta, you know, give your, give some effort, you know, give your energy to people, you know?
Yeah.
And God, and God, the universe will reward you. So I was doing things like, hold Anthony needed me to do something, like hold something, okay, whatever, that's what I was doing. You know, I met you guys, you guys were filming that like, at a basketball court and everything.
I remember that.
Again, yeah, when I seen you again, I'm like, oh yeah, definitely, I'll jump on there. So it's just crazy how the universe kinda just brings people around and, you know?
Yeah, connecting us, you feel me? Hell yeah, that was a, that was a while ago too, I remember that basketball court. God damn, I was, I wanna say 2016, 17 maybe?
That was 2018, it was 2018, it had to be 2018, cause 2017 I wasn't out here yet.
Okay, in the 2018, yeah, still a while though, you feel me? You know what I mean? So, you actually answered one of the questions I had for you, I wanted to ask, why'd you hop into politics? You actually answered it, you feel me? So, another question I got for you is that, let the people out there know, why should we vote for you as a council member over the other guy?
Well, the other guy's name is Stephen Whitburn and he is the quintessential career politician. Alright, which is, you know, these guys, they get out of college, they do a little something for a while. I think he was a news anchor, he ended up jumping, I wouldn't say quite quickly, but he's a member of the Democrat Party and the way they work, you move through that machine and it's like the next man up, you know? And so he ran against Todd Gloria using his own money in this district, which is District Three. Todd Gloria is the mayor of San Diego.
Oh yeah, I know what Todd Gloria is.
Yes, yes, so he ran against him, lost, Todd ended up, you know, bringing him on his team and he worked with him and so after Todd left, it was his turn. Okay, so he kinda went in there. The way that Stephen Whitburn came under my radar was that my girlfriend, you know, she, she's not from here. And they were doing some, they were doing some drilling at night. And me growing up in East Diego, I just, you know, people, you know, there's gunshots, the helicopters going on, people are playing music next door, the way I was raised, it was always crazy stuff going on at night, right? So it was really not a big issue to me, but it was, you know, she works just like I do, so it was a big issue to her. And so, you know, like a lot of guys, you know, it's the woman who kinda gets you to get up and, and get on your shit. So I started looking into it and I'm like, what, like who's, who let them do this? Looked it up, went all the way down to the Planning Commission or the Planning Department over here on Third Street. And the way, my interaction with them, trying to get answers and stuff and just getting the cold shoulder rubbed the wrong way, you know? And mind you, these guys who, the council member works for you, he works for me, you know, specifically me in this district. So when I found out like, who's running, who's in charge? And I hit him up, no answer, his team answered me three, four months later. Asking, and I send the letter again, like it was just poor communication, right? And that rubbed me the wrong way, so I looked up who the guy was, Googled him, found out he's from West Germany. And that, he's exactly, he's from West Germany was where he was born. He grew up in Wisconsin, which is still far, right? Came out to San Diego and now he thinks he can change everything and it's just, you know, and, and Todd Gloria is from San Diego, so that's one thing. But when I seen Stephen Whitburn, he wasn't from San Diego, I started asking people around, I've been downtown for years, right? I haven't seen him, been asking other businesses about him, they haven't seen him. And not only have they not seen them, they had issues with them, with towing, with parking, you know, him telling them that they're gonna look into certain things and them not, and you know, and he's not doing it. And so I, I started looking to what a city councilman does, you know, everything around it. And I said, you know what, I can do that, I could definitely do that, you know? You need somebody to go out there and speak to the community, I do it all the time. You know, communicating with the homeless, speaking with small businesses, even when I was acting and doing the promotion and spokesmodeling and all of that, right? Yeah, great rapport with small businesses. So it was just, I was, I was looking at it and I said, you know what? Not only can I do the job better than this guy, I think the people deserve somebody who will actually work for them. If you look at these guys, particularly Stephen Whitburn.
Yeah.
He wouldn't, like if you called him right now, you think he would come down and, and work for you? You think he would do something for you, you think he'll hold a bag or fix a light or, or even just listen to you, you know? Some of these guys believe that's over the position, you see what I mean? And he's taking it for granted, I think I'd do a way better job, I did, I do a lot more for less.
Yeah.
I think I do a service to the people in District Three and not just the party, right? Cause a lot of politicians, whether Republican or Democrat, they listen to the party first.
Yeah.
You know, me, I listen to the people first, because it's the people that I represent. So I just felt that I could do a better job than this guy.
Okay, so with that being said, um, tell the people, state to the people, what are some of your policies and things that you would do to help out your district?
Well, one of the biggest issues in my district is homelessness right now. Okay, and so, it's a very, it's a very tough situation, right? But it starts with actually communicating with the people who are involved. And it can't be one-sided communication, right? So on the one hand, you can't just communicate with specifically the homeless. You have to communicate with the residents, you know? You can't just communicate with the residents and not the homeless, you have to communicate with everybody, even the business owners, even the people who are in charge of communicating with them on a daily basis. Like the San Diego Downtown Partnership, people ride around on bikes and tell them, hey, you can't piss here, you can't, excuse my language, you can't shit here, you know, masturbate out in public, you can't sleep right here in front of this. This is thing, these are things that happen, you know, and so, one of the main things that is holding up a lot of what's going on with the homeless problem in District Three is that the city council is weak on the issue and for many reasons, but obviously, you know, you look at the homeless, the homeless community, a lot of the faces I see are black.
Okay.
To be honest, alright?
Yeah.
I see a lot of white faces as well, I see a lot of Hispanic faces, you know? But with me, as a black man, I see a lot of black faces as well, you know? And so, I think that that, you know, the fact that it is a minority issue, I think that some politicians who aren't in that minority, right? Are a lot more hesitant to speak on certain things that need to be done because they're afraid to be called racist or they're afraid to be called, you know, whatever it is. So they just kinda put things on the back burner and it just leads to inaction. You see what I'm saying? So that's a big thing that I want to touch on is that, that's, that's a big issue, right? Especially on the Democrat side, where, you know, on the one hand, they're saying they are for the people, right? But on the other, it looks bad when you're telling people, hey, you gotta get up, you gotta move, you know? Now, that's one, one aspect of it, another aspect, me, my past, having been homeless, having been incarcerated, right? Having a brother who went through the whole Salvation Army and now he's not only managing a couple houses, he's also about to become an officer of the Salvation Army, I understand the issue.
Okay.
I'm not afraid to tell people, you know, when you have people come out there, straight out of college and they're like, hey sir, and a guy's acting all crazy and you look on my Instagram and everything, you see I've interacted with them, good, bad, however you would like to say it, I've interacted with people who are unsheltered homeless people. You know, some of them are my friends, legit, that I was locked up with, some of them are my friends that I grew up with. You see what I'm saying? When you get somebody who comes out of college, right? And it's not just people who come out of college, or people who don't really know how to communicate with them, the, you ask them, so when's the last time you, have, do you do any drugs? No. You know, but I'm sitting here looking, you know what I'm saying? Like, 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 bruh, when's the last time you smoked meth? Yeah, to be honest, you see what I'm saying? But when, when the cold thing about it is that there's just a stigma, it is, you know, we gotta get over race. But there's a stigma with certain people that you can't talk to them about certain things, you know what I mean? But every time I go out there and I speak to these individuals, I can get them to talk to me. Because they understand me, they know that I'm not, you know, I'm actually asking to help them. Cause if I wasn't trying to help them, I would just walk by them like I see so many people do all the time. So, it's being able to communicate with these, with, you know, sheltered and homeless people is a big thing, you know? Come clean, you know, but what have you been doing? Cause we gotta get that settled before we put you anywhere. But here's, you cannot sit here, you can't be right here, it's not gonna happen. Why? People live here, we got kids that's going here, we have to have some type of order. And so, in essence, it's just about being tough, but also knowledgeable, that's why I say on my website, it's tough love. You know, we have to be very straightforward with them, we have to be direct, but we also have to let them know like, hey, you cannot be sleeping out here for health issues. 575 homeless people died last year, I believe.
Damn, R P to them too.
Yeah, 575 homeless people die on the streets, you know? And so, and these are quotes, I, I gotta actually get the quote, but that's one of the numbers.
Okay.
You know, that's not, that's not acceptable.
Nah, not at all.
You mean shelter, we have to get them in beds, you know, everybody's not gonna move into a tiny home, straight off the street. You know, for whatever it's worth, this is still America, you gotta work for what you, for, for what you're getting. You know, we'll help you get off of that, out of that tent, we will help you get off the street for sure. It's just about being, you know, showing tough love, man, being, you know, hard on the issue, but also understanding, no, we're not throwing everybody in jail, cause you shouldn't go to jail if you homeless, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, dead ass.
But there's a lot of people that's taking advantage of the homeless out there as well, there's people who's out there trapping, you know? And, you know, people gotta get in how they live, but,
Hmm, I see what you're saying.
You can't also be selling drugs to people who have mental illness.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? Can't be taking advantage of people who are getting benefits from the government. You know, so there's some things that we have, but one of the main ways that I wanna deal with it is, I've been working with some community organizations that, and, and a lot of people don't know, I'm a Republican. You know, I'm not gonna hide that fact, a lot of the Republicans that you guys don't like, I don't like either.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying? I mean, so, at the end of the day, like, a party is just a title in a sense to me. I don't really look at titles like that, like Republican, Democrat, now I'm looking at policies and what you trying to do? And really, what you trying to do for black people and black Americans, you feel me? That's what, that's what I look at and I see that you're trying to help out us black people because we are disproportionately homeless out here in San Diego. And that is one of the biggest problems that I see in San Diego, you feel me? So, you're doing the damn thing, bruh, you're doing it.
There's some organizations that I've been working with, we're trying to get, you know, some, we're trying to get some, some more support with, you know, the broader organizations in San Diego, but.
Can you aim them, that cool? Can you name the organization so people can know or?
Well, I mean, we all know like the pillars of the community, they've been doing good work in San Diego. So before you go talk to anybody, those are one of the, you know, one of the people, organization that you do wanna talk to cause they're active, you know, in the community. But right now, it's, it's really people who work, it's some people work with the city, some people who don't work with the city. So it's, it's like a loose base organization or a loose base group of people who are outside of the in-crowd, which is in the city council and in the big parties, that really wanna do something and have the experience. And some of the ideas that they've been throwing around is, right, you know, some more drop-in centers and places where people can actually go during the day, because a lot of times when the shelter, they have to close or clean so that people have to kinda, you know, it's, it's low-key loitering. Because where you gonna go? It's not like you could just chill in your house all day, so that's why you see a lot of people out there and that, we need to have some places for them to go, so there's some drop-in centers that are being looked at and just more services that have rapid, well, more programs that have wraparound services. And one thing I wanna see is the, I don't, I have to get that number, but I don't wanna say 80 million, but the, the millions of dollars they're spending for homelessness, right? I wanna see them put some of that money into community programs.
Okay.
And also, you know, circulate the money within the community of San Diego, especially within the city. Cause we got a lot of community programs out here who can hire other, you know, hire at-risk youth, you know? Let's, let's see a way to kinda, you know, all money in, let's try to get the money circulating as well while we're solving the problems. We could do more than, you know, we could do two things at once. So that's one of the things I would like to see is some of that, the homeless money going to the people who can actually get out there and talk to these people and take some of these people into their organizations and clean them up and get them right, you know? Salvation Army, Alpha Project, you know, Father Joe's, the pillars of the community, you know? A few other things that's going on right now.
Okay, okay. Uh, I, I remember earlier you say, uh, you were in education and stuff like that. Um, education out here, uh, how do you feel about the education system out here in San Diego? I'm not too familiar with it, so.
Well, compared to a lot of other places in California, we have a, like, I think we have a fairly good educational system here in San Diego. Obviously, you hear people talk about San Diego, they call it squares and the way we sound and everything, that's attributed to the educational system. Uh, I think where it kinda gets messed up is when you get to some of the middle schools and the high schools. We gotta put some more effort into the high schools in San Diego, the kids have been, uh, the test scores have been dropping, especially with blacks and Hispanics. You know, we're a community, so when we say blacks and Hispanics and stuff like that, people say they don't wanna talk about race, you gotta understand that we're a community. And so we have to look out for one, one another, because at the end of the day, it's bringing the whole San Diego down when, when we have one race that's doing terrible here or, or another race that's doing, you know, something else over here. So, but I also would like to see more emphasis on the technology that's coming out, cause everybody, you know, cat's out the bag, you have AI. AI is gonna be writing a lot of things, is gonna be doing all the math soon. You know, and so it's getting to a point where kids, who I believe are always smarter than us, right? Not smart enough to make certain decisions, but kids are smart, you know?
Yeah.
So, I believe that kids see that some of the technology that we're using right now is, uh, is becoming obsolete and we gotta kind of move, we gotta move with the, with the youth. You know, 3D cameras, classrooms need 3D printers, 3D glasses, like we need all of that because AR is gonna become a big part of our society, whether it's in five years or 10 years. It's just gonna, once those glasses get on here, it's gonna be over. And you're gonna need to know how to work them, how to fix them, how to navigate the software and the hardware. So we need to be moving in that direction with technology and in schools too, you know? But that's a bigger issue, that's with the school boards and everything, but anything that would come across my desk, that's the kind of mindset that I will be taking with me when I'm looking at that.
Okay, um, another question I had, so people out there, they might not really know what a city council member do and what's the point of having a city council member and what the power you can bring to the city itself? Can you kinda explain that in lamest terms to people? So they'd be like, okay, this is why we need a councilman or woman for us, for the people and stuff like that?
Okay, well, the city council is divided into like nine districts throughout San Diego. My particular district is District Three, so that's downtown San Diego, Bankers Hill, Little Italy, Hillcrest, Mission Hills, like old town kinda area over there. North Park, South Park and everything in between, University Heights, Normal Heights and all that, that area, you know? Uh, yeah, North Park and South Park, in Balboa Park, where I was born, so.
Hell yeah.
Totally different from, uh, like District Nine, which has like City Heights, I believe was District Eight. And that's, uh, or even in like the southeast area, which is District Three, I get confused with the board, the county board of supervisors in the districts, cause they having a race right now. But District Four, which is like Monica Montgomery, it's totally different, right? Downtown is different from Skyline, Southeast is different from City Heights, Southeast is different from North Park. So you think somebody, the thing with District Three is it's like a microcosm of the city of San Diego, except we don't have that, you know, outlier, the outlier areas. But you have downtown, which is where, you know, it's obviously it's downtown. Then you have Bankers Hill, which is more financial than Hillcrest, which is a huge historically LGBT community. Then you also have Mission Hills and those suburban areas along the hills, kind of when you're driving around the Aiden look up.
Yeah.
Those areas right there, which is traditional single-family homes. And so, then you have North Park, right, and South Park, which is also a lot of single-family homes. Kinda divided in the way people think, right? And even the age group, but the average voter in my district is what, 38, I'm 37. So I think that, that kinda reflects the mood and the temperature that's going on in the district. The reason that we need city council members is because the city council member is the person who represents you as the resident. You pay a lot of taxes, a lot of people don't care, right? That's one of the reasons they don't care, cause the cost of living is so high in San Diego, it's hard to really care cause you're so busy hustling and making money. But that's when it's very important that you have somebody who is visual, like, or visible, right? Like, look at me, you can't miss me, right?
Yes.
You, you look up, you don't even, a lot of people don't even know who their city council member is and that's not good. You know, and they do that on purpose, they try to hide back like Homer on that meme, going back into the bushes. That's what these city council members are doing, they're going back into the grass, into the bushes, trying to hide from the constituents. You need somebody who's not afraid to be out there, you know, and talk to people.
Yeah.
That's why you need to, you know, pay attention to who your city council member is, because that's the person that you call when you do have a manager who is tripping on you, right? Or, yeah, right? Or, when you are a manager and you have a tenant who's, you know, not trying to abide by the rules, so it goes both ways, right? You know, um, businesses that work in the community, you ever looked up and there was a festival like, hey, when they're having that? You know what I mean? All these things pretty much go up to the city council member's desk. You know, you start off with the planning groups, you have your committees and every, in each neighborhood. But ultimately, what happens and where the budget for the city, for the particular district is going, which park should be fixed? Which libraries should get allocated resources, what roads need to be prioritized? You know, they, there's a big thing going on in North Park on 30th Street, cause they put those bike lanes in there. And this is one of the issues why a city council is important, because the city council guy, the city council member we have in there in District Three now, Stephen Whitburn is not. is not, he's not from San Diego, right? Exactly, but he doesn't know the culture, so he voted to put bike lanes on Thirty-Fifth Street. Right, Thirty-Fifth Street, traditional street in, uh, North Park, right, runs all the way through North Park, uh, South Park, right? A lot of businesses down there, when you put a bike lane there, what happens to the parking? All your parking spots are now removed, hundreds of parking spots that could have parked at a business right there are removed. Do you, you know, how many times, have you ever drove around and just went somewhere else because you couldn't park?
Hell, yeah, especially really in North Park, for real. People out there that's like, not from San Diego or haven't been to San Diego, North Park, sometimes the parking is freaking terrible.
Exactly.
Lord.
Yeah, and that's sad, imagine you have a business out there, you had a business out there for years, right, a barber shop. It's not just rich white people, bro, you know? His brothers, you know, working at the barber shop, camera shops, I go get my glasses, I wear glasses, I got contacts in right now. I go get my glasses fixed right there on Thirty-Fifth Street, right, been going there for years. Business is dwindling, because where do you park? And then when you can't park, guess what, you wanna park in, you know, you park somewhere where you're not supposed to park real quick, you get a ticket, you get too many tickets, you get your car towed. You know, you keep getting your car towed, you can't go to work, right? They want people to ride buses to work, we're not gonna be able to ride buses to work. But, but look, and that's another reason, but you, you lose your car, right? Then what? You, you can't work, you can't work, you can't pay rent, you can't pay rent, you become homeless. So it's just a whole cycle that's going on, and that's because of bad policies.
Yeah.
And so, uh, yeah, that's why you need to, you, you gotta understand who you're voting for and who's in, uh, you know, who's running the area that you live in. And I also wanna make that a thing too, cuz in San Diego, we've been too quiet. We've been too quiet about what's going on, and we're waking up and, and now our gas is high, and now we got a bike lane in front of the house, you can't even park. You know, now they built a big skyscraper next door to your house, and now they can look out your window at your kids in the pool. And if that, if that's what you want, then that's cool, but the city should be talking to you and, and saying, hey, Kamal, like, how, is this cool? You know, and obviously the mayor's not gonna be able to get around, but that's why you have city council members. Because the city council members are supposed to divide those districts, uh, the city into these districts and be able to communicate and talk effectively for the people in the, in the district, you know, and that's why it's important. I wanna, uh, you know, uh, I want my campaign to really, you know, emphasize that. If anything, when I leave, people gonna be like, alright, who's my council member?
Yeah.
Like, who is this guy? You know?
So, so you're talk, this'll be the last thing we'll talk about. Talk about your campaign, I'm, I know you were talking to me off-air that you wanted to get into, and I was like, hold on, wait till we get on air. Talk to me about your campaign and what you wanted to talk to me about off-air, talk about it right now.
Well, um, I'll give you a story. Uh, I don't know if you're familiar with Black San Diego, right?
Hell, yeah. Hey, shout out to Cherie, you feel me? You know, I mean, one of the owners of Black San Diego, you know, I'm very familiar with Black San Diego, shout out to them, man.
Yeah, well, okay, so, uh, you know, I've been on, posting on Black San Diego, uh, from all kinda sides. Even, you know, from an actor, from somebody promoting other people's business, running, you know, ads and things like that for other businesses, running it on there, mixed results, you know, some great results, uh, you know, some no results, whatever, but the whole point is Black San Diego is one of the go-to resources in San Diego, uh, for people like me and you.
Yeah.
Uh, I posted one of my, I posted the fact that I was gonna run on Black San Diego. And obviously, I'm a, I'm a Republican, I'm a black Republican. Soon as people see that, they, hey, no, get him down, throw eggs at him however they can, right, without even hearing you speak. And then you speak, and then they really want you, like, get him out of there, right? But, uh, but that's the beauty of Black San Diego, right, that page? And you got a lot of other pages that's doing things like that, like, uh, shout out, uh, Black Society, BOK Society as well. Um, check them out, but one of the reasons I wanted to post on there, right? Even knowing that my district is not predominantly black, very small black major, uh, uh, black percentage of voters in my district. So it's not like I'm, I'm, I'm going out to try to get the black vote. One of the things I really wanna do though, is empower the media organizations that we have.
Okay.
Know what I mean, and the group? So as a candidate, I would love to see a forum, right, where the candidates, not just me, but Stephen Whitburn, you know, Colleen Cusack, who's supposed to be running, Kate Callan. You know, all the candidates come to Black San Diego and talk about the issues and stuff like that. So we're, we're in a new era of politics where it's not just, uh, KUSI or Fox Five, or, or Fox News or CNN. Now you have people who are rivaling these, kinda, like, you see what Tucker Carlson just had, the guy talking about Obama, some crazy stuff, right?
Yeah.
Um, but people have to pay attention now, because he's, you know, is direct. And that's what went on with the news and with media and everything around, um, that's going around politics. So that's one of the things I wanted to do, was empower the, uh, online, uh, entities around politics, you know? Not just blacks, you know, but, you know, all the niche groups that are online, you know? So, that's one of the things I'm gonna do with my campaign, is bring awareness up, you know, empower some of these groups that, uh, may not get that news coverage, that other, you know? Or empower some of these groups that may not get the, the recognition that they deserve, you know, like Black San Diego. So, uh, and just like this podcast, you know what I'm saying, uh?
New show, I started telling people new show.
Yeah, so, exactly, you know, we need more things, like, just to the point, like, I'm calling the podcast, because we don't have that many new shows, you see what I'm saying? Just like that, that's even how I've been conditioned, but that's what I wanna change, is I, we do need more Latino, uh, you know, uh, rural white, you know, those people out there, Oklahoma and, and Hamul and stuff like that, they don't always jive with the white person here in the city of San Diego has to say. You know, so there's a lot of these different, uh, groups and demographics that need to, I think, need to be empowered and their voices need to be heard. And that's one of the things I wanna do with my platform, is empower smaller, uh, you know, entities outside of the KUSI and the, uh, Fox Five, things like that, NBC San Diego. Now, mind you, I will do those, and I plan to. Exactly, but I would also like to sit down with a Dago TV.
Oh, yeah, Dago TV is cool.
Exactly, so, and I would like to see them show their audience, right? Just by, I mean, uh, I'm a millennial, right, so I have a certain look. I think that it would draw a little attention to other audiences, so they could at least look up. It, it's not about, hey, you know, vote for me, of course I want people to vote for me if they can in there in my district. But it's also about people saying, like, like, dang, look at this dude.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be one of them, yeah, like, you don't look like a city councilman. And so, hell, yeah.
But I thought I suit, but I throw that suit and tie on, and let me stand next to him, we'll see who we want running it, you know what I mean? So we could do it all kinda ways, you know, and somebody was telling, like, you, why, you gotta put a suit on and stuff, I'm like, man, y'all don't want me in those suit. It'd be, it's gonna be unfair.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying, that's, that's, you know, but, uh, yeah, we definitely need to have different voices up there. And the cold thing about it, the cold thing about it is that, the cold thing about it though, Kamal, is it's not, I will use race and say race, I'm not gonna run from it, some people don't say, miss, is, is, they're, they're Mexican-American. Black, they're white, like, we're not, I'm not running from nothing on this campaign. You know what I mean, somebody just, uh, Isaiah Washington was on my, uh, I think I was on Isaiah Washington, uh, on his Twitter, and he got mad at me for saying nigger. He was calling us negroes the whole time, he says negroes. He calls us negroes, bro. I'm like, I'm like, alright, bro, I. But, you know, you OG, I'm just, go ahead and say what you say. So we're, we're, we're having a discussion, and I say, man, we need niggas in office, man, like, I'm talking, that's how I talk, that's how I was raised.
Yes.
Saying, my mom was like, why'd you say that? Why, why'd you say, you know, my mom was, my mom was awesome though, shout out to her. But, uh, but that's just how we talk, man, and I'm not gonna get up there and, and pretend like black people don't say nigger. You know, and so, but, um, yeah, but see, that's the divide between that older generation and me and you, you know?
Yeah.
I wanna, you know, just kinda change that, not saying to go on TV and say a bunch of niggas and, and try to make it a joke, cuz this is serious. You know, but I'm not gonna run from nothing, I'm not gonna, uh, mince any words, you know, I will apologize when it's needed. You know, that whole traditional, the whole traditional, uh, political thing needs to be updated, you know?
Yeah. I feel like that's what we doing right now, and I, I feel what you saying, cuz like, um, especially us, like, black Americans, we need to be a little bit more politically savvy and have a little bit more political information and have a more, uh, political knowledge. It's like, once you say, you put in Black San Diego, and you say you're a Republican, everybody, oh, boo! For Ron DeClantis, la, 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 it's like. Let's wait, let's hear politics, let's hear this brother out, you feel me?
I don't really like Ron DeSantis either, man, he, uh, but, but you wanna know, let me tell you something, though. But, uh, Ron DeSantis is gonna have to come out to San Diego, you feel me? And so, yeah, and, and I'm, and, and I'm in the party, I'm a Republican, so when he comes out here, I'm, he gonna have to holler at me. Well, he not gonna have to holler at me, but when he comes out here, I will speak to him, just like I spoke to Larry Elder and all these other guys who passed through San Diego. San Diego's a big Republican town, but we're, we're a moderate Republican. A lot of the people that we don't like, a lot of the people out here, we all came out here for some of the same reasons. My girlfriend, she's from Cincinnati, you know? In Cincinnati, they're strict, they, they just, the freedom is different out there, you see what I'm saying? In California, we have more freedom, so we are a little bit more open, we're a little bit more liberal, we're more moderate, right? We're not just hard, this is not the, the Alabama Republican Party, right?
Yeah.
Not, but when DeSantis comes out here, and we in that room together, I'm gonna ask him now, what you say? You think that black people learn, black, what, blacksmithing from slavery, bro?
Yeah, they say it was beneficial, like, it's like.
But see, I, that access, that's what a lot of people, that's how you make corrections, that's how we solve the world by being in people's face and asking the hard questions in their face.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying? Cuz some of that stuff you saying, you saying to a bunch of people that don't look like me, but when we right here in front of you, you not saying that. So sometimes you gotta kinda like, you know, you have to be present. We can't be sitting here being present and all strong and stuff in the shadows, no, we out here present, you know what I mean? And, and, uh, here's a crazy thing, I, I, cuz I know you don't have that much time. But I was talking to a lady, and she was talking about Moni, uh, Monica Montgomery.
Okay.
And she was just talking about how it's hard for her to, to even really speak her mind, you know, me and her were on opposite sides of the, uh, of the aisle.
Yeah.
But, uh, I'm like, yeah, why don't she like, you know, really push? And, and it's cuz they said she'll be angry black woman. You see what I'm saying?
I got you.
Yeah, 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 and I, and I'm like, that's that politics, but I'm not gonna let the fear of being angry black man stop me from speaking. You see what I'm saying? And we gotta, uh, we gotta show them that, you know, um, we could be in these areas and talk to people and be nice. My friend just called me from prison today. And all he's talking about is the Republican Party and Democrat Party and all, it's, it was changing the conversation. Before that, it was, it was whack one hundred, and, you know, and that's, I guess that's. Like, we changing the, 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 the conversation, you see what I'm saying, like? And so that's kinda one of the things, and here's the cold thing about it, it's safer. We, if we know how to, if we understand our outlets, and I seen a black dude on YouTube walk by, babe. What's that guy's name from, uh, from Honey, I Shrunk the Kid? But the guy from Honey, I Shrunk the Kid was.
The main actor?
Yeah, from, Rick Moranis. I don't know how, you know, you, you watching a movie, and you end up looking up something that was like three degrees removed, and so, I'm looking up Rick Moran, I'm like, man, what happened to him? I look him up, he got assaulted by a black dude. It was a black brother, walking down the street, just punched him for no reason. And me and my girl was talking about it, and it's just, it's a lot of trauma, bro. It's a lot of anger, a lot of people don't know how to speak, and they only know how to speak with these, and I can speak with these, you know, but you know what happens in prison? You get tired of speaking, well, you can't, you can't fight everybody. You see what I'm saying? Sit down and really, and really talk to people and be, and that's, they say the politics come in, you know, and I think that, uh, and it's not just blacks. The people right now, with the polarization, a lot of people, you know, are mad about what's going on with Trump. You know what I'm saying? A lot of people are mad what's going on with the kids, you know, on the flip side, a lot of people feel that, you know, the police aren't doing their job, they just killed the black woman, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they, they been.
Yeah, young.
Exactly, and so, there's, uh, in this, in this time of polarization, we gotta learn how to, like you say, how to be able to talk and use these outlets and not run from them, you know what I mean? It's, it's less dangerous. That's why, that's what politics is for, people's going to war and stuff, and killing people and, and all of that, right? Conquering tribes and killing the whole village and stuff, all to just get down to this. So we gotta, you know, we gotta participate, you know, we could, we could, uh, you know, if you feel that you're not being heard, you can participate and be heard, you can go down to city council and, and yell, hey, come yell at me, I would love it, come down there. You know, it, you don't like what I'm doing, come down there and yell at me, you know, come on, come to one of these town halls. Uh, that's another thing too, I wanted to talk to you about, uh.
Town halls, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, uh, maybe, you know, getting together and hosting some town halls and, and, and doing some debates and stuff like that. You'd be one of the per, persons for it, man, as far as with the host. You know, that's one of the things we wanna bring in, just different, you know, different crowds and just different ways of doing it. It's very stale, the political climate in San Diego right now.
Oh, I, I know, I, I, I actually talked to somebody about it, I'm like, when it comes to politics in San Diego, it's kinda like, it's, the way I look at it is cuz we're kinda very, it's a very safe city in a sense, and it's not a, a lot of problems that go on, like homelessness is very crazy, the housing market is crazy. But other than that, it's, it's not, it's not so, it's not so wild, which, I mean, kind of a good thing though, you know what I mean? You know?
But we're, we're, um, but the, the trust fund kids, right? Is which they're acting like, in the city council are wasting the money, wasting, you know, wasting the money that San Diego has, you know, we, we make a lot of money here, and they're just, they're, they're blowing the money because they never really had, I mean, I guess, with fundraising and everything, right? What's going on with my campaign?
Yeah.
Most political campaigns have been worried about fundraising, we need to raise this much money, we need to raise this much money, right? I've been in business, uh, trying to get, you know, loans, investments and things like that, I understand the need for money. But what do you need, it's, it's not about the money, it's the actions. Just like, we need eighty million for homelessness, you know how much they pay for those bike lanes? Four hundred and fifty million they're paying for bike lanes. People don't know, when you, when you, when you have, well, I've never had rich parents, but I can imagine if you have like a golden goose, you're not really tripping off what you're spending, you're not penny-pinching, I'm penny-pinching now. The people that are in city council, particularly Stephen Whitburn and the votes that he's been making, they don't, it seems that they're not looking with the best interest of the, uh, taxpayers in San Diego. They're wasting a lot of money, because they don't know how to get things done, the right way, you know what I mean? We're right, right, you know, we're right here by the border, we can't get, you know, like, there's so many opportunities. We have a lot of labor here in San Diego, why are we spending four hundred and fifty million to paint on? We have a lot of labor here in San Diego, why are we spending four hundred and fifty million to paint on the street, bro?
On a, a damn bike lane.
You know what I mean, so we're getting whooped, or somebody's getting somebody on the side, right, and I'm not coming in here trying to step on nobody's toes, I've never been that guy. You know, but just know that I should, you know, straight narrow, if you doing something crazy in, in city council, you gotta, you cut it out. We gotta get some stuff done, man, we gotta get San Diego back cracking. It was better than this. You know, people aim to San Diego, you know, I mean, I know you from Oakland, right? And, and the way, and, 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 and some of those liberal policies, man, is, is, is making it, you know, it's making it hard to really want to be out there.
Yeah, it's wild out there.
It's, it, it, yeah, and they not helping it, you know? So, we don't want San Diego to be like that, man, that's just, you know, I love Oakland, I love the town. But we don't want San Diego to be like the town, bro, that's why, you know what I mean?
I understand, okay, I get it.
Maybe like a little San Ho. Daily City or something, but you don't want like the town, or, or.
Yeah, I feel it, bro, I love my city, but trust me, I understand, bro, it's well, on, on that note, look, uh, let the people know where they can find you and also let the people know, like, where they could go to vote and when they can vote, like, you know what I mean, dates, times and things and that nature.
Yeah, obviously, uh, so you can find me at W W W dot Jones three for District Three dot com. That's the, the, uh, number three, Jones three for District Three dot com. Uh, you could type in Ellis California Jones on Google, it should pop up. You could throw Ellis California Jones on Instagram, Ellis Cali Jones on Twitter, Ellis Cali Jones, Ellis California Jones. You put both, they'll pop up on, uh, Facebook as well. Uh, my personal is California Jones, we do some things from that is, uh, as far as campaign, I kind of combined. Not necessarily personal, it was one of my, uh, acting pages, but that's just on Instagram, but the main thing is Ellis California Jones, you put that on Google. You should find it in Jones three for District Three dot com. The election is in March, we have a primary. So right now, the top two, uh, vote getters in March move on to the general election in November twenty twenty-four, so I'll be running with the president and everything else if I can get past the primary. So if you live in District Three and you're a registered Democrat or Republican, then you, uh, you can vote for me. You'll see me on the ballot, on the ballot, that'd be, you know, Ellis California Jones, you'll see me, it's a nonpartisan race. So a lot of people gotta understand that, it's not Democrat versus Republican. This is not the national, uh, this is not national politics. Only thing Democrat and Republican is, like you said, is a, is a label, because that's the party that we organize with, as far as with, you know, issues and grassroots and, and having meetings and things like that regarding the community. As a council member, I'll be representing the whole district, so the party's blown out the window, I don't care if you're Democrat or whatever. You know, some things that need to be done in District Three, you know, have a democratic bent to it, and then we'll get done. You see what I'm saying, because it's not about me, it's not about the party, it's about the district, and anybody who knows me, no, you can't really tell me nothing if I don't believe that it's righteous, so. You're not worried about that, but yeah, um, yeah, so that will be, March will be the primary, twenty twenty-four. November twenty twenty-four is the big dance.
Okay, y'all, y'all heard that, alright, March, then November, alright? Amen, Ellis, man, hey, bruh, I appreciate you coming on to the news show, bruh. Blessing us with some knowledge, you feel me, I most definitely done learned some things, you feel me? And thank you for coming on the show, bruh, bruh, you feel me, hold on, man, I gotta give you some air horns, bruh, you feel me? I appreciate you, man. Alright, y'all, we coming to the end of the show, you feel me? Once again, this is another episode of the Sears glare, I'm your lovelier hated host Kamal, AKA The Black Seinfeld, AKA Magic X, and since I got the best audience out there and the best guest, what should y'all be doing right now? You goddamn right, give yourself a round of applause. Need some air horns too, you feel me? And look, man, for my tubers, YouTube been around since two thousand five. I don't need to tell y'all what to do to get the video order channel booming, but just like the rest of the tubers say, I'm gonna say the same thing. Like a sub, sub a share, share a comment. Y'all know what to do, some of y'all out there, you feel me? Now for my Twitch family, hit your bro to follow, hit your bro to share, that'd be greatly appreciated, you feel me? Also appreciate my lovely sponsor, First Place Losers, the link to the shop gonna be in the description below. Y'all go check out the fire ass garments made out of a hundred percent Egyptian cotton. I guarantee it boost your sexy pillow by let's say eleven percent, and look here, it look good on me. Most definitely gonna look good on y'all, and also, I'm gonna have the links to all of California Jones socials, the website, all in the description below, all you gotta do is just go, boom, tap the link. It be right there, you feel me? Once again, man, hey, California Jones, man, I appreciate you for hopping on the news show. Yeah, hell yeah, you feel me? But, hey, bruh, once again, thank you for coming on to the show, you feel me? And in March, bro, you got my vote, bruh, like, I feel like you doing the right thing, you feel me, you trying to help us out, you feel me? So, y'all hear that, March, and trust, California Jones, I'm, we in, what, uh?
September, yeah.
September, yeah, I'm gonna be screaming until we get to March, alright?
Appreciate it.
Yeah, man, with that being said, we about to be out, y'all.